Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 12th Select Board Meeting. This meeting is going to be solely for the purposes of interviewing for the new appointment for a town manager. I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the pleasure of this. Please. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I will ask for a roll call. Frank West here.
William Maselli here.
Greg Bendel's here.
Kevin Kyra here.
Garrett Palmer is here.
Flora Jones, John, could you introduce yourself and your partner and your company?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Petron, Community Paradigm. With me is Julie Jacobson. And we've been, as we've talked to many of you, you know, during this search, and we've been the firm that was hired to do the search for, are we all set? Okay. Search for the town manager's position to assist this board. So, we've been working through the screening committee. You had a nine-member screening committee appointed. I want to thank Rob Peterson and the members of the screening committee. Excellent screening committee to work with. We went through, you know, procedures with them. We had seventeen candidates, you know, apply for the position here. And the screening committee worked to break that down to seven candidates that they interviewed. And they're recommending four for the board to interview as finalists for the position. So, this evening, as I understand, we'll be assisting this evening by asking questions of the candidates. It'll be the same questions that we ask the four candidates, you know, over the next two nights. This is, again, your procedure, so if anybody has a follow-up question at any point or a question they want to pose, you know, feel free to do so, you know, as we go through. I know you had put out a call for questions. We've received those through the interim manager, Lou, and we've reviewed all of that and made sure some of that's incorporated, you know, in what we're doing. We'll be addressing various areas in the questioning from, you know, the introduction to leadership management, finance, personnel, economic development, and so on, as we go through the line of questioning. So, I know you've seen the list of questions, you know, that will be asked, you know, as we go through. Sometimes we will skip a question if we feel the question's been answered to facilitate because we have an hour, basically, with each of the candidates. So, that's the presentation, you know, from us at this point. We're ready to proceed if the board's ready to proceed.
Yes, we are. And I understand the first candidate is going to be Andrew McLean?
Yes.
Okay. Let me pull Andrew in.
Okay. As we start, our first candidate this evening, Andrew McLean.
Hello. How you doing, sir?
Thank you.
Frank West.
I'm Andrew.
William Maselli. Thanks for coming.
How you doing? Lou Smith.
Garrett Palmer.
Greg Bendel.
Greg. Nice to meet you.
Kevin Kyra. A pleasure.
Okay. Can have a seat over here, Andrew. So, as discussed, you know, Julie and I will be asking the questions, but you'll be directing your answers to the board as you go through the process this evening. So, first of all, I want to congratulate you on being a finalist here for the town manager's position in Wilmington. So, thank you for applying and congratulations on being a finalist here. So, at this point, why don't you, you know, introduce yourself to the board and discuss your specific interests in this position and a little bit of your background of how you got here.
Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity. The, I've been spending a career in public administration, and I see this opportunity as an excellent next step for me. So, as you know, I'm Andrew McLean. My career in public service started at the University of Massachusetts. I worked at both their Lowell and Boston campuses. And then, as I was sort of hitting the limits of my interests in higher ed, public administration, I had an opportunity to go on to the municipal side. And there's a lot of analogs. It was an easy, an easy jump from public administration at university into municipal. It's a whole different world, but I wasn't, I wasn't literally starting from nothing. I had a lot of, a lot of shared experiences. I was in Reading, then went over to Maynard, Massachusetts, and I'm now in Pepperell as the town administrator. And that, that progression from those three towns was all of that, you know, the culmination of all that I had started through college and into the university system, and then just brought it all home in municipal. I made that move about fifteen years ago, a little more than that, actually. And I never, never regretted it. I was very, you know, the university is an incredible place, but municipal government was the right home for me. And so, I've moved along that progression to here. My experiences in higher ed and then in those three local governments have given me a really broad background for Wilmington. I've worked in facilities management, in IT, human resources. I've been doing budget and financial management in every, every role I've, I've played. And all of those things give me the background to lead an organization as far flung as, as municipal government. You've got hundreds of employees, all different sort of stovepipes between public safety and public works and so on. And one skillset won't, won't help them all achieve. I've got that varied background that I can talk the talk with each of those different departments, help them with their long-term planning, and help us all achieve our goals.
So, how would you work with the board in understanding a vision of the board for the town? And what do you see as your role in that process as well as setting a path for implementation?
So, I've done some research on this town, and I'm very impressed with the amount of planning this town does. And I would start there. The work I do now, we do annual goal-setting and priority-setting, and then we, we build on that at the select board level, and then we bring that out to the department heads and ask them to focus their goals and priorities to reflect what the select board have set. We also have a master plan. So, there's a lot of sort of layers to this in the town I work in now. This town has got a lot of that in place as well. I believe your master plan's getting dated, but you have a very strong facilities plan, and I know that you're already actively working on implementing it. So, that type of planning, the financial planning in this town is done for its entire history. You guys have a lot of strengths, and you can start building on those. I think to more directly answer the question, though, I would sit down with this board and find out more about the values of this community and where you see it heading, and then start building on those principles we just talked about. The things you already have, your plans, your individual visions for how to get there. And then, my role is your implementer. I'll manage some of that day-to-day. I'll work with the constituencies, whether it's the citizens, the staff, whether it's about figuring out the financing. All of those different pieces have to be pulled together in alignment with those, the goals that you've set.
So, based on that, the board is in consensus that leadership skills are critical, you know, at this time. What skills and approach will you bring to the table to address this?
So, leadership is one of those nebulous things, hard to define. You know it when you see it type of a thing. For me, managing and leading my organization starts with what is the individual need? I need to sort of complement what their needs are, what their skills are, and with setting those directions. So, you know, finding the, finding the linkages. Some people are going to be really good at, say, the financial component of something. And putting them in the right position to succeed makes, makes my job look easier, makes them look like a great employee. But if I know it's a weakness of theirs and I put them into that situation, it's just a struggle for everyone. So, it's really aligning those skills with our goals. And then, sort of, leadership comes with, with the coaxing of that.
So, as to this job in particular, what are the opportunities? What are the challenges? What's bringing you to the table here?
The community I work in now is very ambitious, but it is not well-resourced. It doesn't have a financial opportunity to do the things it dreams of. If I had a nickel for every time someone in our town said, "There must be a grant for that," you know, and, and for me, that's a wonderful way to supplement your budget. And we've actually done pretty well with chasing grants. But it's not a financial plan. It needs to be supplemental and complimentary to your real plan. I'm an ambitious person. I'm interested in doing some things in my career, and I see an opportunity in this town for a town that invests in itself. I see, I see what it's doing. You've already got a senior center underway. I was just out in the lobby looking at the plans for the school department and town hall building. Investing in yourself is an exciting opportunity for someone like me who loves to be that implementer, loves to connect those dots and make, make those things happen for the community.
I have a, I have a question? Sure, here, working with, with a team. As you probably know, if you are, if you are the appointed candidate, we are without an assistant town manager right now. And it would be incumbent on you to be a great part of looking for an assistant town manager. What would you be looking for in, in someone to fill that role?
So, I've been assistant, and I currently do not have one. It's, it's not vacant. It's not a position that we have, and I certainly miss it. I valued my role as an assistant. I know how I complimented the town administrator in that community, and I know how I would benefit from having that type of resource next, next to me today. In terms of what I would look for, I need to really take a beat with this community and see what it has in its portfolio. I know that the person in the position previously focused on HR. And if that position is going to remain vacant, maybe that needs to be the priority. If there's other resources already in place where that isn't an area the town needs focus, perhaps we find someone with a different skillset. So, I would take that beat. I'd want to understand, really, what is really needed at a priority level, and then finding that person that can complement my skillset. So, for instance, I have an HR background. I don't want to take a position like this and consider myself an HR director, but I may not need the strongest suit of that next assistant town manager to also be HR-focused.
Currently, just so you know, currently, the assistant town manager is also our HR.
Correct. So, that's, that's what I'm suggesting, that with that vacancy, that would be an area that would need to get filled. But if, it also needs to complement my own, the, the other weaknesses in the town. For instance, if you wanted a land use coordinator, that was a really high priority for you. Now, you have this vacancy here. Is there a way to bridge that assistant position into land use and find some other way to complement the HR role that is vacated? So, it's...
Thank you.
So, just to continue that just a little bit, also need a finance director. So, how do you build that team, you know, approach with two major positions of that needing to be filled?
Yeah, this is an exciting time for someone in my role. Quick sort of an aside, when I worked in Reading, there was a new chief. He had come up through the ranks, and he brought me along about a year later. And he went off to the FBI Academy. And then, there were a couple of retirements of people below him, and he was able to populate the command staff around him with his own people. And that combination of bringing in his team and his experience, like leaving the building literally for the FBI Academy, coming back, and suddenly, he was in command of that higher structure in a way that was different from before he had left and before he had filled those lieutenant positions. This opportunity here is analogous to that. There's an opportunity for me to come in as your manager and build a, a higher-level team that can work synergistically with me because we, we've selected them, and we're going to work together with them in these roles. So, I see that as a huge opportunity. Obviously, in the short term, having vacancies in critical positions can hurt a community. So, that requires some real planning and careful, careful execution.
As you know, in Wilmington, as in many community schools, you know, have, have a position, you know, in the community, and, and people care about their schools. What's a good relationship? What's a proper relationship between general government and schools?
So, I, I don't see them as separate. Schools are a critical component of government, right? It's required to provide education. They're a huge percentage of our budgets. We should be working hand and glove with them. It's insightful for this community to, to put the school department and the town hall together. Forcing that relationship together should create dividends down the road. I work in a regional school system today, and we meet roughly, well, we say we're going to meet monthly. We meet probably six or seven times a year. And, but those meetings with two other town administrators from the neighboring towns in the district and the school committee and the superintendent's office staff are really valuable for our long-term planning. If the person was literally in the same building as me, those conversations could be happening organically on a regular basis instead of on some schedule that might get postponed or delayed for various reasons. So, I, I see that as a really important part of this, and building that relationship is an important part of my role.
So, you mentioned HR a little bit, but let's talk finance, you know, at this point. And so, talk about your role in the finance, you know, as well as your financial management strategies for ensuring organizational sustainability.
So, budget management shouldn't be that complicated in a town. You know, we, we know how much our levy limit can increase. We know how much our budgets will sort of reflexively increase as a result. And we have plenty of examples, or plenty of opportunity to do this because the nature of our work is so cyclical. So, if we get it wrong last year, we can fix it this year. So, I have worked in budgets in that, in that cycle, my, in the business cycle of my career at university and in local government, has always been matched up that way. I find it very, it's very easy, I think, to sort of build the basic, the basic budget. Your challenges come in with the unexpected and the unknowns. In terms of building that team, this is really critical. The team I have right now is in a bit of disarray. We've had some turnover, retirements. We had a maternity leave that never came back. We've got new young staff that are still on, on the learning curve, and we can feel it in, in the department level. Some of the reporting is delayed, and department heads, say, in our enterprise funds in public works are, it's really critical that they know what their revenue is, is like. So, when you have a turnover, it can create unintended consequences and some downstream friction. That's become a focus of me this year, managing this turnover, the training of the new people, and getting our books in order so that people can do their, their next year's planning based on what they know about this year.
So, double A-plus community here. And, you know, just screening around, we talked about fiscal response, you know, fiscal philosophy, you know, a little bit. Why don't you tell the board, you know, how do you approach, you know, these pieces in order to improve the financial condition of the town going forward?
So, it, it feels like a luxury to look at your budget in comparison to what I am dealing with. And, but I think, I don't think that they're that far apart in terms of financial stability. When I got to the community I'm in, it was quickly apparent that they didn't have enough. And as analyzing the nature of the town, what it was trying to accomplish, I've over and over suggested to our finance committee, to our select board, that we're about ten percent underfunded. You know, the ambitions of the town need about ten percent more resources. This year, it's come to a head in variety of ways, and we're proposing a tax override of a little over nine percent. So, it's, you know, it's that opportunity where the, the critical masses of the community are finally on the same page, saying, yes, we do need to invest more in our community. This community is already there. It, it spends a lot of time thinking about fiscal conservatively, holding on to its money, saving it, being prepared to use it effectively and efficiently when the time comes. Incredibly admirable in that, in that respect, that this community has that stability, and lots of communities would love to be there. One big difference with this community and the one I'm in now is your business, your commercial portion of your tax base, about forty percent. We're about seven percent. And many of our community members say things like, "Why, we just had more businesses." And I sit there and say, "You know, if we doubled them, doubled all of the businesses," and you can just imagine, like, twice as many storefronts and so on, it would still only be fifteen percent of our budget. It's, it's something we want to strive for, but it's not something that is a short-term or even a long-term solution to that town's challenges. And this town has that stability, and it should leverage that. It should, it should hold on to that philosophy, shouldn't change it, but it should remember that it saved that money to invest in itself for a variety of reasons. And it shouldn't, it shouldn't be afraid to move Wilmington into its next needs. That's why it saved the money, to, to be able to invest it in itself.
Talk about your experience relative to financial forecasting and reviewing financial policies.
So, I was in Maynard, Mass., and we were developing financial policies, and I left before the finance team finished them. Pepperell has financial policies that are probably almost as old as the town itself. We're planning our 250th anniversary celebration next year. It is a weakness of our town that it does not have policies in a sort of forward-facing way. The ones they have are, you know, forgotten, long-forgotten, dusty, and not necessarily paid attention to. The financial policies should be front and center. It shouldn't be a mystery to people why we save, why, why we use free cash, how we budget and what our controls are. How do you justify a new employee being hired? All the little different things that don't seem like a big deal. Oh, it's only fifty thousand dollars. It's only this, it's only that. And across all of our departments, it's millions, and it can turn a, a good, solid, sustainable budget on its ear overnight. So, having those policies in place is critical to that long-term sustainability.
So, what's been your experience with building a strategy relative to capital projects? You mentioned, you know, a couple of projects here and a few more to talk about going forward. And then, financing and implementing these projects. Talk about the projects you've been involved with, you know, as well in the past in, in your roles.
So, we have a pretty nice capital plan. It's not as nice as your facilities plan that I spent some time reading through. And I started my career in facility management, in dormitories management, residence hall management at University of Massachusetts up in Lowell. And so, I gravitated to that plan when I saw it on your website. And it's just, it's so thorough, it's so thoughtful about how it's looking at long-term demographic trends instead of just rushing out and saying, "We need a new this, that, or the other thing." It was really taking that long-term view. Pepperell has a capital plan that is appropriate for its size in comparison. We look at, it, it's a little bit more sort of prosaic. It, it looks at what does this building need and lists all of its attributes, say, lighting and HVAC systems and so on, and then puts them on a five- and a twenty-year schedule so that we can really calculate just that raw basic of costing. We do the same thing with our fleet. We do the same thing with equipment. So, we have that plan in place. It totals about seven to ten million in any given year. And in our general fund, we're budgeting about a half a million dollars. So, it's, it's not a, a pretty picture in that sense, but I think it is appropriate in that it is a good plan, it's, it's well-vetted, and when the money is there, when the resources are there, the town knows how to react. It knows what, which of those items on those lists are its highest priorities. And we do supplement that half a million in the general fund with, you know, Chapter Ninety is part of that, other state grants. We have had the opportunity to move things forward despite not having the, the deeper pockets that, that, that plan requires.
So, particularly with capital projects and even other areas, you mentioned, you know, getting grants can't be a, the single financial strategy. So, you know, what are the areas do you look at for alternative forms of funding and bringing, you know, being able to address capital needs and budget needs?
Sure. So, I mentioned that we're looking to do a tax override this year. When I first got to Pepperell, we also did a tax override as my first six months on the job. And we had a six-hundred or seven-hundred thousand dollar structural deficit. We were spending free cash to maintain operations. It was just, it was upside down. I walked in, sat down with the select board, said, "We need to change this." And we built a budget that included a 1.4 million dollar tax override, and we were able to get it passed. The difference between the needs of the town that year and that structural deficit and the 1.4 million, a hundred percent of that went into capital. It was about five hundred thousand dollars at the time. That money's still in our budget, as I've mentioned earlier. Hasn't grown tremendously, but we're focused on that. Some of that money is directly in public works' budget because they need to pay for heavy equipment. And they shouldn't be fighting for free cash when their backhoes don't work. Same thing with our police department. They have their own capital line for cruiser refreshes. So, that gives stability to our budgets. In the longer-term plan, we're hoping to build on that. Last year, we paid off a non-excluded mortgage on a land acquisition the town had. It was about forty thousand dollars a year. That's off the books now. The mortgage is paid off, and it should just disappear into the general fund. We've moved it directly into capital. We need to bolster our capital. It's, you know, from a taxpayer perspective, that's not an increase. But from paying for a land acquisition to now being able to pay for badly needed capital, we've sort of responsibly moved that needle forward for capital planning. Longer-term, part of this tax override we're talking about now will also be sort of foundational things like capital planning, but most of it is an operational need.
So, in HR today, we're going to switch over a little bit here. So, in HR today, what are some of the key issues that you think need to be addressed in, in big-picture HR?
So, I'm sure you've heard this before, but hiring is increasingly difficult in recent history. You know, we used to get twenty or thirty resumes. Now, we get a half a dozen, sometimes less. So, we need to look in new ways at how we recruit, but we also need to make sure that it's not, it doesn't stop there. We recently had two retirements in the past year. Both employees were excellent employees, part-timers. Both of them were in their eighties.
Wow.
And twenty years ago, I would have thought that was ridiculous, right? And I'm working with these people, and I know they're good employees, and there's nothing wrong with them being, contributing to our community in a way that works for them. So, like, taking off sort of the, the blinders of, well, you know, you work for this amount of time, and this is all you can do. It opens up opportunities for us. There's mentoring opportunities for experienced people who wish to retire to then work with the new people who don't necessarily have the experience yet. Say, in your, challenging your finance department. A great example, they're difficult to hire. Talented finance people can do very well in the private sector. We've got a nice value proposition for them, but if they're chasing money, we can't compete. But somebody who's a retired treasurer, who can mentor the next generation of people coming up the ladder, a great opportunity to stretch our dollars and not fall flat on our face in a difficult-to-hire area.
What are some qualities you seek when hiring, when you're hiring town employees?
Flexibility is, I think, most important. You need, you know, we talk about, like, people skills, right? And until you meet somebody who's kind of a jerk, you don't necessarily think people's skills maybe are the highest-level thing, but suddenly, you go, "Oh, this is the person that needs the people skills that doesn't have them." So, but working with people in local government, one of the biggest things we've tried to do is some cross-training. And so, when I say flexibility, I'm sort of overlapping with a conversation about that. An employee who can help out in a variety of roles is far more valuable than the one subject matter expert whose door is shut all the time. And as great a job as they do, they're not contributing to the whole beyond their little stovepipe. So, that's something that I would look for.
So, how do you...
That openness.
Great. How do you encourage teamwork in your organization?
So, we've had that opportunity. I mentioned some of the turnover in our finance team. I have five employees in one... And as great a job as they do, they're not contributing to the whole beyond their little stovepipe. So, um, that's something that I would look for.
So how do you?
That openness.
Great. How do you encourage teamwork in your organization?
So we've had that opportunity. I mentioned some of the, uh, turnover in our finance team. I have, uh, five employees in one finance department. The most senior one in the house, uh, just celebrated his second anniversary in the town. And, you know, as a group, they're a bunch of rookies on the team. They are a team. And, you know, it's not, you know, everybody's all kumbaya and, and everything's perfect. But, uh, they are working together. I have private conversations with them and they're complimenting something another person did on the team. It's not this sort of, uh, walls up and competitive, I, you know, that if I, if that person succeeds, I fail. It's, it's the opposite. They're working collaboratively. Some of this is by design in the hiring process. We were looking for that personality. Some of it is the department head is a team person. He, he sees the value in that. And some of it is, you know, these people just came together all sort of in that same timeframe over the past year or so of hiring and, uh, dove in as teammates. In other ways, it's more stovepiped and you really need to push it. Uh, we need to do more work in our land use department to work collaboratively. There's a, some territorial things going on with say, uh, zoning versus, uh, so, you know, some other facet of, uh, development coming out of state planning. And having those groups see each other's, um, goals, why zoning is, is saying no, 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 or planning saying this is really important for economic development. Like getting them to work together on that common end is how you develop the team when it's not there.
Every so often, we get an employee who, um, has trouble being a team player. So how do you, how do you address that? How, how do you address that employee in the situation?
So there's so many facets to that question. You know, does the person, is the person lacking confidence? And they won't step into the situation because they don't know what to do. And so they just stick to what they do know and that closes out other people, right? So we suggest that's the issue and we work on that. Perhaps they do have the skills, they just don't have the confidence. Perhaps they need training, uh, in order to develop the skill. It could be that they've got, you know, their nose out of joint because of poor communication with a coworker and now they've shut them down. So there's any number of things and to really delve into what is causing that lack of, uh, team play, you need to know that to then uncover it. But, um, I had this conversation this afternoon with an employee. I know, uh, both sides of the story. I've spoken to both employees and the issue is they're not communicating. Both of them, they're not even like, it's not even a right and wrong thing. They're just crashing into each other completely unintentionally and then both of them are saying, hey, what the heck? And if they're communicating in their work, it'll be much more seamless. So, uh, many times you, you create that, that friction and the lack of team because of lack of communication. So I, I would want to open up the, those channels.
So I'm gonna ask the next few questions, Andrew. I'm gonna shift over to economic development. So with what your knowledge is of Wilmington, how would you describe its attitude toward maintaining its current character into the future? And what suggestions would you have to improve on their approach to economic development?
So it's really interesting hearing the question asked that way because it, um, I've been thinking a lot about this question. Economic development is sort of a core part of what we, our, our role here. A community oftentimes, you know, people will come into town hall and say, why don't we have a restaurant on, you know, First and Main? You know, like, that's the best place. How come nobody will do that? And the town can't open up the restaurant, right? It's, but we can do an awful lot to facilitate that. And, um, so if it's working in a community, you sort of know it. You go through a town, you say this, there's some cohesion here. It looks, it looks nice, uh, or it looks vibrant. You can have many different points of view on that, but you sort of understand it and say, something's working here. A lot of that comes from long-term planning and zoning. If your zoning is in accordance with your town's values and, and what your vision of that future is, and you're patient, because it's gonna take twenty or twenty-five years, particularly if you've recently changed your sort of zoning philosophy. You can build into that future. You can get that vision, uh, over time because you facilitated the zoning. The other thing I think the town needs to do more than anything, and this town is doing it, as we've already mentioned a couple of times, is invest in yourself. Your infrastructure is, you know, sort of the, the field of dreams, right? If you build it, they're gonna come. So you want a strong community. You've invested in your parks and sports fields. You've invested in your, uh, infrastructure. Uh, you're investing in your, in your town buildings. Those things reflect the community. And then the business sector and the residential sector are gonna continue to support the community in the way that then look like economic development. The town's thriving.
Thank you. What do you see as the most important actions that Wilmington can take to address environmental issues such as sustainability?
I'm not sure I'm following. So environmental issues I can grab and.
So talk, talk a little bit about environmental issues.
Sure.
What's your experience with dealing with environmental issues? How do you see Wilmington moving toward addressing some of those environmental issues?
Sure. We have, uh, two issues in our community right now, uh, involving PFAS, which undoubtedly you've heard of. And, uh, we have, uh, a high detect in one of our wellfields. We've had to shut it down. We have another with a low detect and we're gonna be building a treatment plant there. Uh, we have a third well with a no detect and we're working to, um, acquire land and, and, uh, put, uh, development restrictions in place to protect that well. Cause that's a heck of a lot cheaper than a treatment plant, um, or even building a new well. So that's one way that we're addressing that, but that's sort of the boots-on-the-ground practical thing. When the detect occurred three years ago, we immediately called a community meeting. It was during the pandemic. We were doing everything via Zoom. Uh, we had about sixty people, including some folks from DEP, but mostly our citizens show up at that meeting and we talked through what was to come. What, you know, the immediate reaction, the long-term planning, and we've built on that. And for three years, we continue to communicate to the, to the citizens. Our test results are done monthly, they're on our website. There's as much transparency as possible while we implement the long-term plan. That long-term plan, this may address your sustainability question. We are partnering with Groton and Dunstable. And the three towns are working on solving, uh, not solving, ensuring that we can provide clean, fresh water to all our citizens. Pepperell has the treatment plant and an active wellfield near the nexus of the three towns. Groton has a pretty big PFAS problem that's gonna cost them a lot of money to address because the miles and miles of pipe they're gonna have to run from their clean water sources. And it's not very far from ours. And Dunstable has clean water sources and they do not have, um, a water department. Pepperell serves as their water department. We, we, they contract us. So we're working together, the three town managers, the select boards, the water departments, all communicating. We've applied through DEP for, uh, SRF funding. And we feel we have this vision to provide fresh water to about twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand citizens for the foreseeable future. And each of these towns would have struggled to do this on their own. Working together, we can leverage that. And that's, that's creating some sustainability for all three communities.
Thank you. Moving on to communications, how would you increase communications internally and externally, including the use of any new technology and any new communication methods? And what have you done related to that?
This is a big struggle. In the good old days, we could rely on our local newspapers that were delivered to people's homes. You couldn't force them to read them, but they were right in front of them. So, um, and now it's a, it's a little bit more passive. We can put things up on our websites and hope that eyeballs come to us. You know, you can do push notifications and so on, but it's not the same thing as, as that newspaper sitting on the kitchen table every day. So we struggle sort of in this transition of technologies from sort of the, the good old days to, to the modern world. Uh, and there's some interesting technologies coming along. In the past year, I've been, uh, working with a company called Zen City, which creates, uh, a more sort of, uh, the dashboard sort of style of communication with the, the charts and graphs and the pretty pictures, more brief explanations as opposed to the sort of tomes that we sometimes pump out, um, of our communities, uh, in, in the old days. I have not contracted with Zen City, but I'll mention them as an example. Excuse me. There's several companies doing this, but essentially it's taking the best things that you see in social media, the most elegantly presented information, uh, from whatever, uh, social media tool you might imagine, and sort of creating the best practice and making it yours and getting it out there. That, that's an exciting new sort of, the new newspaper that's focused only on Wilmington. It's, it's, it's going to be our story told our way in real time in an attractive format. I think that's really a path of the future, moving in that direction, uh, as opposed to sort of, uh, continuing to say, well, it's on our website. And, you know, people say, I struggle to find it, you know, and all of those things. We, we need to sort of put it right in front of them, back on their kitchen table, as it were.
How would you strive to develop relationships with citizens and really become part of the community and engage with the residents?
I think, um, the best way to do this is really sort of one-on-one. I can get up at town meeting and make a presentation. I can be showing up at committee meetings and, and, you know, I'm, I'm the face of the town or I'm the, you know, um, in those ways. And, and you make inroads with people and, and sometimes with groups of people when you do that. It certainly wouldn't short-circuit that. But one-on-one conversations, I met one of your police officers an hour ago, um, you know, is, you know, I'll remember his name when I'm here. You know, it's gonna be a nice conversation to have. Hey, remember when I met you? That sort of thing, right? And you, you build those relationships and those bridges with shopkeepers and with citizens, uh, face-to-face, one-on-one, I think a lot more effectively, um, while still standing up at town meeting and doing some sort of a presentation and, you know, standing up for the town's values, attending your Fourth of July, whatever those events are that resonate with your community, I need to be a partner with all of you, uh, to see that through.
So related to conflicts and disputes, can you give us an example of a time where you had a polarizing issue in one of the communities that you worked in? How did you address it and were you ultimately able to get something accomplished?
All of our issues are polarizing. So, um, we joke around that fifty-one percent is a landslide in, in our business, right? So, um, we had a situation recently and, um, I, um, deferred actually to a select board member. He approached me and said, I'd like to try to resolve this. And it was an issue that was sort of close to his, his heart. He wanted to resolve it and the person that he needed to speak to, he wanted to make those inroads with. I would have been happy to attempt what he did. But this conflict was over, uh, the flying of a gay pride flag last year. And it set off a little firestorm of protests in the community, some people that were unhappy with it. Our select board had a flag policy. They had approved the flag. We, you know, we, we were doing right by our community standards and we were doing it in the right way. But still there were some people that were unhappy about it. And this select board member went and spoke to, uh, these citizens and had that one-on-one interaction with them and had that, he wanted to hear what they had to say and he also wanted to challenge, uh, what it was they were concerned about. One of the people, uh, involved was a Gold Star family. And he challenged them on, you know, the sacrifice their son had made and giving this community the freedom, uh, to voice, uh, its sentiments. And that, that was something, it didn't necessarily change these people's minds a hundred percent. It opened the door up to dialogue and sort of a, a bit of acceptance as opposed to just conflict. If you wouldn't mind.
I apologize. I, I wanna back up just one regarding environmental. We're talking about PFAS and things. As you probably are aware, uh, we have a superfund site in Wilmington, uh, oil and chemicals superfund site. It's our most important environmental issue, uh, with, uh, on and off-site contamination. And I am reading from, uh, uh, one of our residents that sent this in. And I do agree with it. With the potential of redeveloping looming, what is your experience dealing with sites like this?
So you have a real challenge there. You've got, your wells are shut down. You've got to provide, uh, opportunities for that to be at least maintaining what's there, if not potentially redeveloping it. But as I understand it, most of that, the, the impact cost of that is not the town's to bear, but the, the public relations is, the, you know, the, the long-term, what happens next is definitely front and center with this community. I think, you know, again, it's a, it's a huge concern, but it's also a nice opportunity to, to manage through that. My experience with this is a little bit, uh, sort of, a little more compact, if you will. In addition to the PFAS that I talked about, um, in our wellfield, uh, we have a fire substation. And the training that they do on that site included the spraying of the triple AF foam that can, is PFAS containing. And unbeknownst to us, until we decided to redevelop that site and did some ground testing, the soil is contaminated. It's right now not in our wells, it's not in the groundwater, but it's definitely, uh, significant, uh, concentration on this multi-acre site that we wanted to develop. Now, for a couple of reasons, it's not being developed, but prior to getting to there, the plan to develop it, I think addresses your question. The, we were going to build a building on the site and the building itself was going to become the cap of the contaminated area. So it would, it would be the containment vessel, if, as it were, uh, to avoid, uh, the PFAS being in the environment. And that was, you know, we needed DEP approval for that, that sort of thing, but that was the, the plan we were moving down to. In addition to that, you have to do monitoring and you'll need to do this at the Olin site, probably forever, right? But the, uh, the monitoring for us is, is that, uh, ground soil contaminant moving? When it rains and saturates the soil, what, what direction does it flow in? And not only is it moving, at what speed? And is it going deeper? And is it possibly gonna contaminate our water? Uh, so the cap would prevent a lot of that from happening. But if it's already moved around, if it's already moving into areas that aren't gonna be covered by this building, we would have to address that. Possibly removing soils, for instance, would be one option. But those test monitoring wells are in place. I've actually, um, in the process of, um, obtaining easements, uh, contractual agreements with three abutters, uh, so that we can put wells in their, uh, properties off our site so that we can prove that it is contained.
Andrew, how do you define a successful relationship between the select board and the town manager?
This would be an answer for sort of any relationship question. I need to be open, honest and direct with you and I need the same, uh, coming right back. I've, I've spent a career doing this. I'm going to know things that you, as a new select person or as an experienced one, may not be familiar with because your role is different than mine. And you're gonna come to me and say, I need help with this. Explain this to me. What's our best option? My role needs to be to, to provide you with that information, show you where the quicksand is, show you where the, where the, uh, where the winds are and make some strong recommendations. And if you ignore that, I have no problem with that. It's, it's, it's your, you, you know something I don't know, uh, in, in that relationship in many cases. But my job is to give you that open, honest and direct communication so you can make the best decision for your community. I can't do that if you're not giving me that open, honest and direct feedback about my performance, uh, my strengths and weaknesses as you see them. Maybe it's in the moment, maybe it's a more across time, but that feedback to me is how I build. I build and become better at my job as well.
So, looking ahead, what would your first 90 days on this job look like?
A blur. A question like this is important for us to answer. I also think that it can't stop at 90 days. It takes way longer than that to actually accomplish the things that need to be accomplished to sort of say, ah, now I'm not just forming my role here in Wilmington, but I'm actually able to perform at a high level. But in those first 90 days, I need to build those relationships with this board, with the department heads, with the community stakeholders, whether they be committee chairs, civic organizations, the business community, a lot of outreach, a lot of time spent understanding the whole sort of nature of this community in a more in-depth way than I can by reading things on your website and asking people who I happen to know that happen to live here, that sort of stuff. That's like one little piece of the thread. A lot of that can happen in 90 days. There's also day-to-day things that have to happen in those 90 days, so it won't stop at 90 days.
So, to follow up on that, what do you see or what do you hope will be your accomplishments after your first year on the job?
I'm going to have the trust of the board. I'm going to have staff who are committed to the town's vision and responsive to each other, to things that I may ask them to do, that I may tell them to do, depending on the circumstances, that the board may say, this has to happen. If the staff is performing in that way, they see the action, they see the need, they see the direction from the board, and they're on board and we're all working together, that would be a terrific first-year accomplishment.
Great.
So, that takes care of our formal questions from this side. Certainly opportunity for the board if you need some follow-up, you know, with the candidate, your opportunity for follow-up questions at this time.
First of all, thank you very much for coming today and thank you to our consultants for such an exhaustive search. I have two primary questions. Specifically, we're going to, you're going to be hiring, or the town manager is going to be hiring an assistant town manager as well as a finance director. And I'm wondering, what specific qualities or educational background, experience do you think you're looking for on each? And then I've got a different topic that I wanted to ask.
I'm going to tell you sort of a success and a failure story in answering your question. A couple of years ago, I had the opportunity to hire our first HR professional in Pepperell. And it was a part-time situation and I was hoping to get somebody interested in AR, HR, who perhaps was, you know, entry-level, you know, a little bit more than the clerical nature of HR. I wound up hiring a woman who had spent a career in human resources and was looking to work part-time later in her career. And it was just an amazing opportunity for us to have this high-level professionalism in HR and all of her background and experience. So, a lot of people in the community were sort of like, why do you need an HR person? Like, they didn't understand the magnitude of personnel management and how it affects the quality of an organization. This woman gets it and we're building that probably a couple of years ahead of schedule because of who we were able to hire. So, that's a big success. And to answer your question directly about that, that type of background is that ideal. You know, we're looking for someone with a, you know, career experience to look at a huge organization and say, we need a top-notch professional in human resources to make sure that we're on board, we're hiring well, we're onboarding, we're training, we're dealing with problem employees effectively, because that has a morale, you know, a reverse cycle if you don't deal with problems and they do come up. So, that's the target. The sort of the reverse of that, I underestimated someone's ability years ago who was, aspired to move up into a treasurer role, but didn't have that ideal background. But she had the experiential background and I didn't see it. And she wound up going to another community. She's a very successful treasurer collector today and they're so hard to find. And there was an opportunity to take somebody from within who didn't have all the credentials and invest in ourselves, invest in our own team. So, I missed that one. So, I would say, again, in answering your question, we're looking for those ideal credentials, but I think particularly in this job market, we need to look a little bit deeper. Maybe somebody with some tangentially related skills can rise to the occasion.
And the other question I have, and thank you, is, as you know, probably one of the hot-button issues going at town meetings statewide is the whole MBTA rezoning or potential rezoning, I think they call it Section 3A. If the town supports it, we continue to get state funding. If the town, for whatever, if the town-to-town meeting or maybe at a subsequent meeting decides not to adopt it, what do we do? How do you address that as far as the missed funding opportunities?
So, I'm not sure of the exact details in the law, but when you say no, it's not forever, if you were to say no. The town could reconsider that in the future. But this is another opportunity. I know it's scary to people. It's a big change. It's a lot of rules and regulations around, we have to do something within, what is it, a half a mile of our commuter rail stations. And it's a certain number of acres and a certain density of housing that may not be what you have today in Wilmington. So, it's a big change management issue when you get to yes, or to get to yes. But it's also incredibly important, not just to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to this community. Housing costs are skyrocketing and the primary driver of that is supply and demand. And without enough supply, prices will not come down, will not level off, will not stabilize. If each community can do a little bit to help stabilize housing in the Commonwealth, we might be in a better situation in, say, another generation. So, I know it's scary for this community, it's scary for many communities, but it's important that the community look at that and embrace it as an opportunity and not as just something that might be a negative across the board. Losing state funding for other housing opportunities and the other restrictions that the state might impose on you, I believe you would not be eligible for Mass Works grants. You have aging infrastructure in your water department in this town. You're going to want those Mass Works grants. And it may be a compromise, it may have a bitter taste for some people, but when you help stabilize housing prices locally, regionally, and when you get extra investment in your infrastructure in the future, you may look back in eight, 10, 15 years and say, those are really good decisions. Thank you.
So, we are reaching our time, but if, you know, the board wants to, you know, ask additional questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Just, I'll leave it to one instead of my two, but why do you think you're the right candidate for this position?
I am very experienced. I've spent a career doing this. I mentioned earlier, I've worked in a variety of different roles that are complementary to the various departments that make up local government. The role of town manager requires somebody with that broad skill set. If you only, if I only have financial management skills or only have public works experience, I may not have the other skills that are required to accomplish the job. So, I think my experience, that broadness of it, makes me an ideal candidate for a community like this, a community this size, a community that is looking to move itself forward and not just sort of fall behind. You guys have some tremendous planning. I'm excited to be a part of that execution.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Julie and John, thank you very much to you and I also want to thank the members of the screening committee, very talented group. And I want to congratulate you on obviously being named a finalist and I appreciate your willingness to be here and interview with us and obviously very impressed by your resume and I'm very impressed by what I've heard thus far, what you've shared with us. I wondered if you could just elaborate, really piqued my interest when you mentioned what I think is really a weakness of ours right now and it's the potential for us to expand upon our communication to the community. And I was really happy to hear some of the thoughts that you shared. I think we have, one of the highlights that we have is a really strong IT department here in town. Unfortunately for them, in addition to, you know, supporting the town, technology-wise, they're being asked to market the town on top of that. And I think they're doing a good job, but I think that they would be happy if we expanded that a little bit. I didn't know if you could just elaborate a little bit more because, again, I think every community struggles with how do we get the word out to residents about this particular issue, this particular meeting, this initiative that's happening? You know, each one of us runs into folks almost probably weekly who said, I had no idea that was happening. And it's always a tough one to answer, right? So, I just wondered if you could expand on that for a moment.
Sure. We can never communicate enough to your point. And, you know, we've been talking about this for a year and the person is, I never heard this, right? So, it does happen a lot and it is evidence that we need to do more. One of the best ways we communicate in Pepperell is the electronic signboard at the Rotary. And it says, you know, go to the website for more information on whatever. But people see that and it's always like the first say, all right, what do we need to do? Get the signboard message up. That's, you know, one piece of it. But that signboard message may be, go to one of these electronic dashboards. That's, the one I was describing earlier is one example. I don't want to pitch that company in particular, but they're out there and they're terrific tools. There's another company called ClearGov that does that very thing just for financial stuff. So, you can, these tools are out there, they're not particularly expensive, they're relatively easy to implement. Your IT department is undoubtedly talented enough, but they may be IT people and not marketing people. But perhaps the next hire is somebody who has more of a marketing background and takes advantage of those tools and leverages them. You know, it's a great opportunity for a 17-year-old.
Intern.
Yeah, no question. Just a big thank you for being here. Very impressive.
Thank you.
But just a comment, we have something called, you like paper and newspapers, we have something called the Town Topics, where the town manager writes an internal newspaper for the residents, so you would enjoy doing that, I bet.
It's not on my resume, but I was editor of my college newspaper for years.
But thank you.
Thank you. It's very nice meeting you all.
You as well.
I'd like to personally thank you. The board would like to thank you. As it's been said, you came to us very highly and we look forward to making a decision. Hopefully, if everything goes well Monday night. So, just an opportunity for Andrew for a closing statement to the board.
Thank you. Some of your final questions might have been incorporated in that, but I would like to sort of underscore my interest in this community. I saw you from a distance when I was over in Reading, worked with some of your staff over the years. It's a terrific opportunity for me and I believe I've got all the experiences that this community needs for the next generation. I love the opportunity.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.[499.23]
Great, thank you. Would you just explain to us, how would you work with the board to understand their vision for the town? And how do you see your role in implementing the board's vision?
Yeah, so I'm very goal-driven. And so what we do in the town of Bill Ricker right now is we do sort of a goal-setting exercise with the board and with all the department heads. And so the big thing that we do is we first off, we meet with all of the department heads and we figure out, so you know, what are your goals? What's your vision? What do you want to see the town look like move forward, all of those sort of things? And then we kind of put that all together and we package it together. And then we bring it to the Board of Selectmen and we say, okay, this is our goals. You know, what do you guys think about this? We want to hear from you. And then we meet with each selectman individually, one-on-one. And we sort of go over our goals, we go over their goals, and we kind of figure out, all right, you know, this is kind of where you stand on this. And then we'd go through the process with the whole entire board. And then we get a goal sheet from, I mean, we put that all together and we put it in one sort of complete package. And then what we do is we have the board vote on it. Everybody's voted on the goals, everybody knows these are the goals. And then we just sort of, you know, bang ahead and we give the goals to, you know, the department head where it kind of lands. And then there's a bunch of random goals that, you know, the Town Manager's Office handles or the Planning Department handles, DPW and sort of all the other departments. So that's how we handle sort of moving forward strategic initiatives. And that's how I would handle moving them forward here as well. And you know, it's a partnership with the board. I want to hear from you guys and understand what your goals are and where you want to go. So that's that.
Thank you. The board is in consensus that leadership skills are critical for this position. What skills and approach can you bring to the table to address this and enhance leadership?
Yeah, and so I kind of laid it out a little bit in my portfolio, sort of my management and my leadership style. But so now I'll kind of go through it. And so one of the most important things that I think should be said at first is, you know, I understand what the department heads and the staff and everybody's kind of going through right now. And so I understand, you know, I have a little window into sort of the professional angst and personal angst that they're feeling, that, you know, they don't, there is a new town manager coming in, there's a new boss coming in. So with that being said, I understand that you can't come in and reinvent the wheel right away. You have to sort of, you know, come in and you have to have conversations and you have to listen. You have to listen to the board, you have to listen to the residents, you have to listen to the staff in the building and hear sort of what works, what doesn't work, what's good, what's bad. And you can't make any changes right away. You have to listen, you have to figure all that stuff out. And you have to sort of run alongside the organization for a little while and understand, you know, how it all works. You can't just start flipping switches and because you don't know everything, you don't know the background, you don't know sort of the 360-degree view of everything. So you have to understand it before you can sort of start making changes. So you know, that's important to come right in and to listen to sort of the staff, the board members, the residents and figure out kind of what's going on before you make any changes. And then like I said before, you have to have those collective goals. That's very important to have those goals because, you know, that brings sort of buy-in from the staff and from, you know, you want to have buy-in and you want to have passion. You want to have those people who work with you and you're leading to, you know, buy into the collective vision and help sort of move it forward. And then you want to include people sort of in the process and the decision-making and, you know, part of the setting of the goals and moving, you know, everything forward. And you want people in the building to feel included and not just feel included to actually be included. And then, you know, another thing that's really important is to me is you want to have sort of fun doing the job and the employees to have fun doing the job. And, you know, I take this job, I take the job that I have and I will take the job that I hopefully have very seriously. And I want to be proud of my work and proud of my accomplishments and proud of the things that I do. But you have to have fun coming to work every day. And so, you know, I think that people who work with me and, you know, who, you know, the department heads, the staff, all of that kind of stuff, they would tell you that, you know, it's a fun place to work. It's a fun atmosphere to work. They enjoy coming to work, they like being at work. And, you know, I would want to bring that culture and that atmosphere here. And so the way that we do that in Bill Ricker is we, we call it sort of the pop-up method. And we have, you know, our regular department head meetings that every sort of town has or every organization have. And we have, you know, our regular subgroup like the Finance Department or DPW Division Head sort of meetings. But we employ this thing called the pop-up method. And what we expect our department heads and, you know, other mid-level managers to do is to pop up, you know, one to five times, three times a week and kind of tell us what's going on in your department and what you're working on and what you see coming down the road and sort of everything that's kind of going on. And through that, right, you get to know your employees better. And, you know, they'll talk to you, they'll open up to you because, you know, you're building that rapport with them. And they'll talk to you about, you know, where they went out to dinner, their kid scored a goal in the hockey game. And that stuff's important in creating sort of, in being a leader and being a manager and getting people to buy into everything. And, you know, like I said, it's a lot of fun to work. And Bill Ricker and I would bring that same sort of culture here.
You touched a little bit on it, on the team building, but talk a little bit more about that, especially here in Wilmington with the need for a new assistant town manager as well as a finance director.
Yeah, yeah, so like I said, right, the important thing is, is building a team and that's very important to me. And so before I knew that I had this interview, I sat down with a lot of my department heads and I talked to them about, you know, sort of what am I good at? You know, what do I need to work on? You know, things that are important to me. And something that came up over and over again was the fact that building a team is important to me. And like I talked to you guys, I said, you know, building that culture is important to me. And so the best way that I think to build a team is, like I said, is you have to get total buy-in that we are all sort of running in that same direction. And you do that by, you know, building rapport with them and getting everybody to buy into sort of the shared vision, the shared goals and moving everything together. And so, you know, it's not easy to build a team and you got to, what's very important is also hiring the right people. And so I spent a lot of time as the Personnel Director. And so in Bill Ricker, during the time that I was the Personnel Director, we lost 11 department heads. And we lost them to either retirement or it was COVID and they just said, you know, I'm done working in municipal government and it's time to move on and do something else. So we had to completely rebuild the team while I was there. So the team that I had for the first four years versus the last, you know, three years is totally different. And so we completely rebuilt that team and we brought everybody in and, you know, we created this really great culture that we're all going to work together, work towards a common goal and have a lot of fun, you know, doing it and being proud of the work that we do.
What do you see as the greatest challenges of the position?
The greatest challenge of the position is obviously, you know, you're brand new. You don't know anybody, you don't know, in Bill Ricker, I know that if I need to get something done, say if I need to, they need a donation for XYZ. I know I can pick up the phone and call this person and it gets done. Or if I need to have a conversation with one of the selectmen about affordable housing, I know whose, you know, pet project is affordable housing. So the hardest part of coming into a new place is you don't know anybody, you don't know what everybody wants to do, you don't know the history behind everything. And that's like what I talked about, you have to sort of run alongside the organization for a little while and figure out what's going on. You can't just start coming in and flipping switches and expecting things to work. You have to come in, you have to listen, you have to work with the board and you have to figure out sort of, you know, the whole and sort of atmosphere of what's going on. And like I said, I look to you guys to, you know, talk to me, tell me what's going on, what your goals are, what's important to you. So, you know, I'd look to the board to help me with that and look to the current staff who's here and to, you know, sort of help me with all those issues.
Thank you. What do you see as a proper relationship between the town and the schools?
Yeah, and so we have a really, I've had a really good relationship. Currently, we have a superintendent and she just came in about a year and a half ago. And I had a great relationship with the past superintendent. So a good story to tell is the, when she was the interim superintendent, it was like her second school committee meeting. They had the first school committee meeting like somewhere offsite. And then the normal place that they have the school committee meetings are in Town Hall. And so their meetings were at seven o'clock and 6:50 she called me frantically because her Zoom wasn't working. And she needed to get a Zoom up and running to be able to run her meeting. And so it was one of those things where she'd only been on there two weeks and she didn't know who else to call. And she called me because over those two weeks that she'd been there, I'd made sure that I'd pop down there, I saw her, I said hello, what's going on? How can I help you? How can we support you on the town side? You know, can we bring you up to speed on anything? And so I was doing that, you know, every other day and I was building the rapport with her to show her that, you know, we're partners in this and we have to be partners in sort of this whole process. And so when she had an emergency and she needed to call somebody on the town side, I was the person she called. And, you know, gave her all the Zoom information, she got up and running and she was able to run her meeting. But we've always had a good relationship with the schools and the schools are important to me because you, the education is sort of what drives the community. And you want to make sure that you have a good school system and they're, they have the resources they need and they have the ability to teach and do everything that they need within reason and without crushing sort of the taxpayers. And so, you know, the Bill Ricker school budget is going up a huge amount this year. And, you know, there was a lot of conversations between us and the superintendent trying to figure out that number. And I think we came to a really generous amount and we've done really well by the schools. And Bill Ricker and I would do the exact same thing here and make sure that, you know, the schools had the resources they needed to do sort of what they needed to do and make, you know, Wilmington an excellent and even better school system than they already are.
Thank you. I'm going to switch to finance now. We want to learn a little bit about your financial management strategies, your experience with finance and budgeting. What's been your overall responsibilities and role in the preparation of annual budgets, operating budgets, stabilization funds, overrides?
Yeah, yeah, so I've been really lucky. So I've been able to see the budget sort of at all different levels. And so when I worked in the city council, I kind of saw it from the legislative side. So, you know, how you guys see it, how from-town meeting sees it, how FinCom sees it. So I always try and put that, you know, hat on when I'm, when we're building the budget. I'm trying to think about how you guys are looking at it, how the residents are looking at it, how everybody's sort of looking at the budget. So I was really lucky in that way to be able to not build the budget, but to see it presented to us, to get prepared to ask those questions and, you know, to, you know, see what the answers are. So I was really lucky in that sense. And then when I came to Bill Ricker, my first job was a budget analyst. And so basically what that was is that they gave me sort of, they said, you know, here's the budget. Start at the very, you know, dollar amount of everything and kind of figure out, is this what we need? Do we not need this? So I went with the DPW Director at the time and I had him show me all of his places that he had trucks and vehicles. And we went over every single solitary truck that he had and what truck, you know, did he want to get rid of next? And what was the set of trucks after that? And we looked at every single piece of equipment. Then I did the same thing with the police, then I did the same thing with the fire. And I did that with every single solitary department. We went line by line, dollar by dollar, like how you're spending all of your money. And so I saw it from the very, very granular level of, you know, this is how all of the dollars combined. And then through that, I talked to all of the department heads and I helped them tell the story about how they're spending that money. So if you look at our budget book that we have in the town of Bill Ricker, you know, it has a narrative and it explains, you know, this is what the department does, this is sort of our mission, these are the budget changes, and this is how we spent last year's money and this is how we expect to spend this year's money. And so the Council on Aging, they do a great job of telling the story and they'll have pictures with the seniors at a pancake breakfast or somebody calling bingo. And, you know, they do a really excellent job and, you know, they're always asking for more, so they like to put all those pictures in there. So I've seen it from that really granular level. And then when I became the Director of Administrative Services, you know, I looked at it from a, in a different sort of lens, more of, you know, capital planning and kind of how everything fits together and how the recap sort of all fits everything together and, you know, the five-year forecasting and all that stuff. So I did that for a couple of years. And then as the Assistant Town Manager for the past three years, you're sort of managing that whole process from above and you're watching the Director of Administrative Services, you know, do this, he's coming to ask you questions because you've done it so many times. You're having conversations with the assessor, the town accountant, the finance director, kind of figuring out sort of everything and how it all fits together. And so in Bill Ricker, the way that we build the budget is we try to have no more than a $200 to $300 increase for the average taxpayer. So Bill Ricker's almost $30 million under Proposition Two and a Half. So we could say yes to sort of every single fire truck request, every single union request that comes through, pretty much in build schools under Proposition Two and a Half. But we understand that you can't do that and you have to be sort of fiscally conservative. And so through that fiscal conservative process, we've built up that $30 million of excess levy capacity through, you know, through being conservative budgeting correctly, making sure, you know, the selectmen give us a goal of a budget increase of no more than 2%. So we try to stay within that and that's usually that $200 to $300 range. And so that's sort of a little bit about the budget. I work with the assessor and the finance director every year on putting together the tax recap for the tax reclassification. We have split tax rates, so I work with them throughout that entire process. And then I worked with the town manager on redoing our debt stabilization policy just recently. So we recently redid our policy to go out for the next 10 years. And so he had previously done it for the 10 years up to here. Then I worked closely with him on, you know, forecasting it out for the next 10 years. And we also rewrote all of our financial policies. We're trying to get AAA bond rating, sort of like you guys. And unfortunately, we didn't get it because we have a huge OPEB liability, but we're working to sort of bring that OPEB liability down as well. But yeah, I've seen, you know, I've been lucky, like I said, I've moved up through the ranks. And so I've seen everything sort of at a different level and I understand kind of everything from the bottom up.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about any large municipal projects or capital projects that you've managed in your past roles? And any experience in getting alternative forms of financing for those?
Yeah, so like I said in my opening statement, so I've been part of 10 capital projects from start to finish. And so, you know, they range in all sorts of prices. You know, we redid a field complex that was $10 million, a sub-fire station that was $11 million. Came in at the end of the high school, which was $160 million. We're, we're in the midst of doing the DPW, which is $50 million. So I've seen a lot of these projects from start to finish and I kind of understand, you know, where you, where you need to go, what you need to look out for and what's important. And so, you know, we've built a sub-fire station and we're in the process of designing a new sub-fire station. And so one thing that came up was the HVAC systems in these places are crazy because they have the plenum vent system, which is sort of taking all the bad stuff and the bad toxins out from the truck. And then you have, if they were in a fire, you have a certain separate decon room. And then you have to remember that they're also living here. So you're trying to circulate the air, give them fresh air, push all the air out. So those HVAC systems are very complicated. And sort of that's what I learned in my first go-around when we built the sub-fire station is that, you know, you have to make sure that's peer-reviewed or that's done correctly, or you make sure that you have somebody else take a look at that thing. And so I have a ton of those lessons learned from doing those projects. And so, you know, we recently redid our auditorium in Town Hall and it was $2 million. And one of the things that was really interesting about that is that I learned the technology at the end of jobs is always really hard to sort of get done because the contractor, you know, he, you know, paints the walls and finishes the floor. And then he's, his sub, his superintendent is pretty much out the door and technology is kind of left to themselves at the end. So I learned that you really have to have somebody watching them, whether it's the consultant or your project manager, making sure that stuff is done correctly. And so we've also been able, we've been lucky to sort of finance things, you know, in out-of-the-box ways. And so I don't know if you guys have CPA here, but we have it in Bill Ricker. And so one thing that we did when we were doing a historical renovation, what we did is we, it was a historical renovation, but we wanted to move the cable access studio into the building. And so we had to figure out a way to pay for it but not hit the taxpayers because that was sort of one of the goal. The selectmen is redo this building, but don't hit the taxpayers on it. And so, I mean, it seemed like an impossible goal at the time, but what we did is we took money out of the CPA because that was already levied against the taxpayers. We used capital, like capital, cable access capital funds. And so we negotiated a really good contract with Verizon and Comcast. We were able to use $400,000 out of, or $4 million out of that. And then the lease payment every year that our cable access studio was paying where they were running their current studio out of, they gave us that money. So we've been able to creatively finance some projects and I have a bunch of lessons learned from doing all these projects. And, you know, that is one of definitely my strong suits and, you know, it's something that you guys have going on. I know you got those three projects going on. And so I think I can be a huge help to making sure that not only have those projects, you know, come in on time and on budget, but sort of all the sort of mistakes and misses that I've already made won't happen again because I've already made them and I sort of know what to watch out for.
Thank you. So shifting over to personnel management.
Yeah.
And human resources today, what do you see as some of the key issues and needs that you'd want to address?
Yeah, and so what's important right now, and I had an employee in my office today talking about this. And so morale is very important. So a lot of people who don't work in the public sector, I mean, the people who work in the public sector, their spouses, their friends, their relatives, they work in the private sector. And there's all sorts of perks that people get in the private sector that we don't get in the public sector. And so I had an employee, and I think this is good for retention, for hiring, for morale, because Bill Ricker's lucky, right? And we can pretty much pay, if we want an employee, we can pay top dollar because we're a big community, we have lots of money and we can do that. And so other communities have to think about different ways to sort of bring employees in, make employees happy, keep employees retained and not to have them go somewhere else. And so obviously you can pay somebody more, but then there's other opportunities to do it. And so one of the things that I think is important and has been brought up to me many times by many employees is either a four-day work week or some sort of long day on Monday and then a half day on Friday. And I know you guys don't have that here, we don't have it here, we don't have it in Bill Ricker either, but that gets brought up over and over again as a way that we could increase retention and morale in the building. And so I think something like that is really important. And then, you know, working from home, that's sort of, you know, some people feel all sorts of different ways about working from home. It's important to a lot of employees right now and not every employee in the public service could work from home. It makes sense for some employees, not for others. But, you know, that's also, that's an important topic sort of in personnel management, retaining employees. And then, you know, something else important, right, is bringing the best out of the employees that you currently have. And what's something that's really important is finding the employees who sort of want to, you know, take that next step. And so I'm sure in this building, there's clerical staff who wants to become a department head. There's a department head who wants to become an assistant town manager. And I'm sure that, you know, there's a department head out there who wants to become a town manager. And you have to find those employees, you have to identify them and make sure that you train them, give them the resources and everything they need to sort of grow and take that next step. And so we've done that with a couple of employees in Bill Ricker. And I specifically identified a couple of them. And I could tell right away that these people have potential, they want to take the next step, you know, and we have to do everything we can to make sure that we keep them in Bill Ricker and we allow them to take that next step. And so, you know, I'll have conversations with them and ask them, you know, what's your goals? What do you want to do? Where do you see yourself? All of that kind of stuff. And you kind of pull it out of them. Some people are shy, but eventually you pull it out of them and you figure out what they want to do. And then you give them the training and you, you know, if there's a time where you can sort of include them in something to help them take that next step, you include them in it to take that next step. Or if there's a situation where you can sort of bring them in and let them sort of learn or make a mistake and grow a little and learn from that situation, I try to do that the best that I can because it's important to identify your good staff, keep your good staff and, you know, bring them up. And I think that's important for morale, especially if people know that, you know, I don't have to apply to go to get that promotion. I could do that in-house, you know, I've been identified as a good person and I can move up.
So you've talked a lot about developing teamwork and encouraging employees. What do you do with a subordinate who's not a team player? And how would you address that?
Yeah, so I mean, that's, it's never an easy situation and it's one of those ones that you have to deal with. And so like I said, I was Personnel Director for two years. So I came across this and I came across it especially during COVID, right after COVID. People were, you know, people weren't always on their game, they had other things going on. And so the most important thing to do is to talk to the employee first and figure out sort of what's going on. Because sometimes it's really easy, they're having some sort of family issue, they're having a personal issue, you know, there's a health issue. And, you know, if that's going on, you know, if somebody recently died in their family or somebody's sick, you know, you can work with that and you can work around that and you can sort of figure out that that's the issue and, you know, you can get them back on the straight and narrow. And then, you know, some people just aren't good employees and they're not going to ever, you know, be the best employee in the world. But you have to figure out, you know, what is that employee's capacity and what is their potential? You have to try and get them to that capacity and have them reach their potential the best as possible. And sometimes you can't do that and that's tough. And so what you have to do is, you know, train them. Can they ever do that job? If, are they not taking the training? Are they not understanding the job? Maybe that's not the right job for them. Then, you know, you unfortunately have to take the next step and you put them on a performance improvement plan and you kind of see where that goes. And we've put people on performance improvement plans and they've done a 180 and all of a sudden, you know, they're one of our best employees and they've never caused another problem. And then there's other employees who you put them on the performance improvement plan and you kind of know which way it's going to go. And sometimes you have to take those all the way to the end, but others see sort of the writing on the wall and move on on their own. You know, it's not something you like to do, it's sort of a last resort, but unfortunately, you know, when you're sitting in these seats, that's something you have to do.
Thank you.
So Bill Ricker has a share of economic development, but coming to Wilmington, what do you know about Wilmington? How would you describe its attitude towards maintaining its current character into the future? What suggestions could you make as to the approach to economic development?
Yeah, so you guys are really lucky. You have four exits off of 93. You have an incredible commercial industrial base. You know, it's, it's absolutely incredible what you guys have done. But you, there's a potential for so much more to be done there. Like I said, Bill Ricker's $30 million under Proposition Two and a Half and we have none of the luxuries you guys have. We're right off of Route Three and we don't have access to 93 like you guys have. So there's a lot of sort of potential there. You know, I haven't, you guys, from what I understand, you guys have a great planner and I'd love to dig deeper with her on sort of, you know, the areas that are zoned off of the highway, how are they zoned? Is there a way to bring, you know, better and higher uses to sort of those locations? And so, you know, that would be one of the first things that I would look at. And then one of the second things that I would look at is 38, right? And so before, you know, I'm right next door in Bill Ricker, some, my parents live in North Reading. So after work, when I go over to their house, you know, I cut through Wilmington from time to time. And one thing I noticed about 38 is that, you know, there's overhead wires going across the street. The poles are sort of like leaning over, the street needs some help, you know, the sidewalks are, you know, could use an update. And so that's one of the things that I noticed right away is that if you gave some love to sort of that intersection, you have, you know, $30 million in free cash, you could take some of that money, underground those wires, you could do sort of, you know, a beautification project with some of those sidewalks. And you could really make sort of that corridor feel really nice and really great. And then that would take, you know, some of those businesses on that side, you know, they might say, oh, wow, look at the investment the town just put in. You know, let's make an investment into our facade, let's make an investment into sort of our businesses and let's sort of, you know, see what we can do in this area. And so I think, you know, that's a very important thing. And then, you know, you guys have a lot of businesses along 38. And so a lot of them are really good businesses, a lot of great businesses, but, you know, there's obviously, you can always have better and higher uses in that area. And then one thing that I also noticed, I know you guys did a study back in, I think, 2018, sort of about economic development. And one thing that was missing was, you know, places to congregate, places to gather, places to hang out and, you know, see your, see other residents. And so I think that you guys have plenty of spaces and plenty of area to do that. You just have to, you know, convince those businesses to, you know, make the investment and sort of, you know, add some of those things into those areas that are already there. And you do that by showing them, you know, putting those wires underground, beautifying the sidewalks, you know, redoing the streets. And you don't have to do it all sort of with free cash either. You know, that area is ripe for a MassWorks grant. You know, you're right across from the train station, you know, we put in for a MassWorks grant, we didn't get it. And then we had a sit-down with the state after and, you know, we tried to understand what was going on and, you know, why we didn't get chosen. And everything that they talked about, you know, that is the site that they want to give money for, for a MassWorks grant. So you might not even have to do it, you know, you know, with your own funds or taxpayer funds, you might be able to have the state pay for a portion of it.
So environmental issues, you know, have been constant and they keep creeping in to the outlook of communities. Olin was, you know, an area here. What's your experience dealing with environmental issues and how would you move forward with that?
Yeah, and so I have never dealt with a superfund site like you guys have in, in, here in Wilmington. But, you know, I am very aware of the PFAS issue. We deal, we talk about that very frequently in the town of Bill Ricker. We actually, there's talk about us, the dam in Bill Ricker being removed. And so one of our biggest worry is sucking in sort of all that PFAS. And would we have the ability to treat the water enough to not have it in there and keep it below sort of the federal regulations that are coming down the pike? And so, you know, I don't have, you know, I don't have the knowledge directly with a superfund site. But one thing that I am good at is bringing in people who do know that kind of stuff. And so you bring in someone like Weston and Sampson or Wooden and Curran, people who are experts in sort of these line of work and hear what they have to say and how we should, you know, handle the cleanup or how, you know, you handle the capping or, you know, can you build something over here? You know, what you sort of do next and, you know, you follow the plan and you allocate the money and the resources to be able to do it. So, you know, I don't have the experience doing it, but I know, you know, 100% I could sort of follow a plan, bring in the right people to tell me what to do and, you know, make sure it gets done in the best way possible.
Earlier you touched upon communications, relative dealing with residents. I want to expound on that, please. And talk about, you know, internally and externally, you know, how would you improve communications, especially with citizens? And what type of technology, you know, can you use to implement that?
Yeah, and so, like I said, I came up, you know, I worked in a political office before and so, you know, I still believe in that all politics is local type of thing. And so, you know, in Bill Ricker, right, I'm around all the time. I go to where, you know, the people in town, you know, they play Keno and I grab a cup of coffee and I sit there and I hang out with them, kind of see what's going on. You know, I go to all sort of the Dunkin's, the small businesses, get my cheeseburgers there, you know, your subs and hang out and you talk with the business owners. You talk with the people who are sitting at the tables. Very personable person, you know, I have no problem going up to somebody saying, hey, who are you, what's going on? You know, I'm the town manager here in Wilmington, this is, you know, you know, what are you thinking? And so I've done that so often and so many times, you know, people know me and they know I'm approachable and they know I'm, you know, out in the community. And they have no problem coming into my office or shooting me an email or giving me a call and, you know, telling me what they're thinking. And so one time when I was stopped into Dunkin' Donuts, and so I go into the same Dunkin' Donuts all the time and, you know, I've seen everybody in there. And there was a builder in there who is in there all the time and he grabbed me when I was in there and he said, hey, Clancy, you got a minute? And he was like, I got an issue with the stormwater in town. I'm having problems with these regulations and it's kind of, you know, a strange thing and, you know, I don't think you guys do it right and you should kind of look at it and do it this way. And so I went back and I was like, you know, that's kind of interesting. I talked to the town manager and he was like, yeah, call around and see what's going on. So I called a bunch of the local attorneys, I talked to our DPW and it found out that we kind of did have a stormwater problem that needed to be addressed. And so we went on and addressed it and, you know, the only reason that that, we were able to address that problem is because, you know, I had been out in the community a lot and people knew me and they knew that I was approachable and they weren't afraid to come up to me and say, hey, I think you got an issue, you know, do you think we can take a look at it or do you think we can fix it? And so I go to all those events, you know, I'm around all the time. And so people know me, they know they can approach me. And so the other thing that I do is I ran the social media page for the town of Bill Ricker. And so, you know, I went on the Wilmington social media pages and I, you know, kind of looked at what was going on. And so there's constituent issues that come up and not sort of, I'm not, when, in the Bill Ricker pages, I'm not diving into sort of a debate about MBTA communities or a debate about, you know, is the senior center in the right spot? But if someone says, you know, my trash wasn't picked up at 123 Main Street, I'll hop into a conversation like that and say, you know, you know, shoot me an email and I'll make sure that, you know, I'll forward it off to DPW and I'll get sort of that answer for you. And the same thing if somebody has, you know, a cross-departmental issue that, you know, if you go to the building department, it's part building, part conservation, part, you know, board of health and they need someone to sort of be the middleman to kind of guide it across the finish line. And so I'll jump in on things like that. And so what will happen now is when a constituent issue pops up on social media, I'll get tagged in the post and people will be like, hey, reach out to Clancy or shoot Clancy an email because he helped me with XYZ problem that I had and I know he'll, you know, kind of help you get it across the finish line. And so I can't help everybody, I can't help every single solitary issue and I can't solve every issue. But the one thing that I am is I'm honest and transparent with the residents and the citizens. And I'll say, hey, you know, that's kind of a stretch, not sure if I'm going to be able to pull that off for you. You know, I don't think that's plausible. Or I'll tell them right up front, yeah, that's something I can do, that's something I can take care of. And so people see me in all sorts of different ways. They see me online, you know, there's some people who, they're not going to leave their house, but they'll tag me online or they'll shoot me a Facebook message. And then there's people who they'll see me sort of out and about doing my thing. And so, you know, it's a long way of saying that, you know, I enjoy being out in the community, I enjoy solving issues, I enjoy listening to the residents. I enjoy kind of having my thumb on the pulse of what's going on, so.
What are some other areas, you know, which you've created communication? You know, so you've talked a little bit about social media. But, you know, you've created some other areas of communication.
Yeah.
You know, particularly on project issues, you know, can you talk about that?
Yeah, and so what I'll say, and I actually print it out because I watched your meeting the other day and I thought it was really interesting. And so I'll pass these around. I'll watch out for the wires, I'll pass one, I'll lend you guys. When I watched your meetings, I was having trouble figuring out what's going on in the town of Wilmington. I was, I couldn't really, you know, I didn't know where you guys were in sort of a fire station project or the senior center project or, you know, some other random thing that's going on. So we do this thing in Bill Ricker and it's called the Town Managers Report. And we put it together every other week and we send it to the board on Friday night. So they can see sort of everything that's going on in the building and outside the building. That way, when you guys go to Market Basket and someone says, hey, I heard about XYZ, you're not caught off guard. You know sort of what's going on, you know everything that's, you know, you know everything that's going on. And I think that's important because you guys are the board of selectmen, you should know what's going on. It shouldn't all stay in my office, we don't want you to get caught off guard. I don't want the little son to call you and ask you about something and you not know. So, you know, that's one thing that we do in Bill Ricker because we want to keep the board informed. We don't want you guys caught off guard, we want you to know sort of what's going on. And we want you to sort of have the thing, you know, that's your roles, to have the finger on the pulse of what's going on in the town. So I find that very important that we keep you guys updated and it's not just going through one person, you know, the whole board knows what's going on.
And can I just, and how often does this go out? Is it once a month?
No, every other week it gets sent to the select board and then we'll talk about it at the select board meeting. So we'll go through the entire report and then the board will go around and they'll, you won't deliberate, but you'll ask us any questions you have about the report, you know, anything that you saw or anything that we might have missed. And you know what it does, it generates some conversation and some future agenda items. And we get a better sense of what's important to the board and what's important to you. And so like I said, I watched a bunch of your meetings and it was really hard to get a sense of what's important to each member individually. You could watch two Bill Ricker select board meetings and you could know, you know, what's important to every select board member just by watching the town managers report. So it's a very helpful tool and we put it out on the website after you guys see it. So that way you guys get the news first, then the rest of the community does.
So how do you describe the overall relationship that you envision working for this board?
Yeah, so I have a great relationship with all the select board members in Bill Ricker and, you know, you can call any of them and they'll tell you exactly that. And I have a different relationship with each sort of select board member in Bill Ricker. And so I've, have a different relationship with all of them because I've worked with them for an extended period of time. And you get to learn them and you get to know them and you figure out sort of who they are. So we have one member who, you know, I talk to every single day, calls me. The conversation lasts anywhere from five to, you know, five minutes to 35 minutes most of the time. And, but that's sort of his style, he wants to be in the know, he wants to know what's going on, you know. And he's, he's always out in the community, he's always talking, he's one of those guys. So he sort of want, you know, he'll hear something, he'll ask me what I'm hearing, what are you hearing? And he's a great selectman because there's always an open line of communication. He always sort of tells me what he's thinking, what's going on, what's important to him and he's excellent. And then you have other selectmen and, you know, they're busy in their job. And, you know, they'll call you on Friday and they'll call you on Monday and ask you sort of what's on the agenda. And, you know, I look through the packet and this is what I see. So, you know, but I have a good relationship with all of them across the board, even ones who, you know, we don't always agree on sort of everything. And, you know, what's important is sort of the open lines of communication. They know, even if we don't agree on something, they know that they can call me, have a conversation about it. You know, and we'll agree to disagree sometimes, but at the end of the day, you're the select board, you're the policymaking board. So, you know, if you guys come together and you make a decision, I'll carry out that directive or objective if that's what the board wants.
So in your first 90 days on a job, what would that look like?
Yeah, so definitely the first thing you got to do is you got to talk to all the selectmen. You want to sit down and meet with them and sort of understand kind of, you know, what's important to them, what's not important to them, sort of their goals. And sort of understand them as a person, understand, you know, why they ran, understand, you know, sort of what makes them tick, why Wilmington's important, all of that kind of stuff. And so you want to do that immediately, right off the bat, that's very important. And then after that, right, you want to talk with your staff and you want to understand sort of, you know, what's been going on in town, what's going on in town hall? Things that are good, things that are bad, things that you like, things that you don't like. And you spend a lot of time sort of putting together all that information. Then you want to spend some time out in the community, like I said, you know, going to coffee shops, you know, places that people congregate in Wilmington and, you know, chit-chatting and figuring out sort of what they like about the town, what they don't like about the town, what needs to change, sort of the direction. And then sort of, once you kind of bring in all that feedback, the best thing to do is to go back to you guys and say, all right, this is kind of what I found, you know, am I on, am I off, you think it's right, wrong? And then what I would do is put together a set of goals. And, you know, it wouldn't be a really fleshed out set of goals because you've only been there for 30, 60 days at that point. And then, you know, I'd give you guys the goals and say, you know, kind of fill in the gaps for me in the blanks. Am I on the right track, am I not on the right track, kind of where do we need to go? You know, then I'd want that back from you guys. And then, you know, we'd flesh that out and then sort of you'd have that, that roadmap of the next, you know, 365 days. And you'd start just moving on all the goals and objectives and start taking care of them.
As we know, there are issues that not everybody agrees to. You know, and sometimes it's polarizing. So how do you resolve conflicts, you know, especially when, you know, it's maybe coming from the board or, you know, other areas? How do you address, you know, the conflicts and the disputes?
Yeah, so I'm pragmatic by nature and so I want to get stuff done, so that's important to me. And so I understand that, you know, even if you're getting 90% of something that you want and you're not getting the full 100%, that's pretty good and it's good to sort of, you know, continue to move these things forward. But it's hard to, you know, figure out the best way to do these things. And so what I came up with in Bill Ricker one time is that we have all these plots of land, we had all these priorities, we have all of these things that everybody wanted to do. And the board couldn't decide on anything. And they said, you know, they kind of just were like, we need to figure this out, you know. You and the town manager go off and kind of come up with a plan or an idea and come back to us with how we can figure this all out. And so basically what it was is that we have fire stations that needed to be redone, we have affordable housing that needs to be built, we have schools that need to be rebuilt. We have a COA, we have a rec center, we have a DPW. We had two old schools that needed to be demoed and we had all of these sort of issues that needed to be hashed out. And nobody could figure out, do we put the rec center here, do we put the COA here, no, I want to do it this way. And people who, you know, the board can sometimes be fractured and sometimes even on the, the one side of the fracture, they couldn't agree on the way to move forward, so it made it very difficult. So we devised a plan and we called it sort of the Capital Facilities Committee and Reuse Committee. And what we did is we put a chair from all of the major committees, like the Recreation Commission, the Council on Aging Commission, two members from the select board, the chair of the Planning Board, the chair of the Conservation Commission, the chair of the School Committee and the chair of sort of all of these major boards in town. And we got them to create this board. And then after that, we took all of sort of the priorities and things that the select board wanted to do and we brought that to this committee and we said, okay, these are all sort of the priorities. You guys have some time, you think about it, we're going to do sort of a public information session and we're going to talk about it and we're going to hear from the community, basically what's important to them. We'll let you guys sit there, you guys can listen to it and we'll go from there. And so we did that public information session and then we brought them back and said, okay, you know, we want you guys to sort of talk about the tiers of what's important, what's not important and sort of list them. And so, you know, we, eventually they had this whole long discussion and then we put together the tiers and then we presented to them, okay, this, these are the tiers that you guys came up with. And then we want you to vote on the tiers and then if the tiers are okay with you, we will go back and figure out a way to fund them. So they voted on the tiers, it was amazing, they all voted nine, nothing of agreement that these were the tiers. In that we were able to do that because we spent so much time doing public information sessions, input, listening to the residents, listening to the board, figuring out what was important. And they were able to come up with, you know, a nine oh vote on sort of what the priorities were. Then we gave them a plan on how to fund it, they gave us a nine oh vote on how to fund it. And then we ended up knocking down the two schools, we're in the process of designing the DPW. And sort of the next thing is the COA and the rec center. And so tomorrow night, we're actually going to them with a location, a cost and a preliminary design of the COA and rec center. And I fully expect it to get moved forward to the select board, who then will move it forward to a town meeting. And so the best way to, you know, pragmatically come up and, you know, bring everybody together is, you know, you hear from the residents, you hear from each other, and then you come up with a plan sort of that works for everybody the best you can. You're not always going to make everybody happy, there's always going to be people who are unhappy, but you do the best you can and, you know, you try and get as much as everybody wants in that sort of plan that you can move forward.
So if appointed in one year from now, could you describe some of the achievements or, you know, that you would like to be able to discuss, you know, as success in your first year?
Yeah, so, you know, be somewhere along with that new town hall, obviously, you know. I'm not sure where that is sort of in the, I understand where it is in the lifecycle, but I don't understand where it is sort of in the construction schedule. So you'd want to move that forward. I saw the foundations in for the Council on Aging when I was driving here. So, you know, you'd want to have some sort of ribbon cutting to do that. You'd want to be moving forward in the MSBA process with the Wildwood Elementary School. And then you would, you know, you'd want to sort of make sure that you hired an assistant town manager, you got a finance director on board with you guys. And sort of you brought the morale up, you brought everybody sort of back up, you brought everybody back on the team and you kind of figured out, you know, this is the path forward, you created some goals and you started moving some of these initiatives forward. And so you guys are in a place, right, where it's, you've kind of defined of this is where the now is. And now you're in the process of, you have to take it to the next iteration and figure out what that next set of goals are and what that next sort of, you know, priorities and projects that you want to do. And I know you talked about, you know, in the candidate statement, you talked about, you know, you need to upgrade your roads, upgrade your water infrastructure, some more economic development. Those are all things that I have experience in and, you know, I'd love to be part of.
Great. Questions from the board at this time? Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Clancy, thank you very much for being here. Congratulations on being named a finalist. Obviously a very impressive resume and the portfolio and what I've heard thus far this evening. I wanted to see if you could just talk to me a little bit more about communication because I think it's something that's really important to me in that we have a really, we have a lot of talented employees here in the town. I think you'll learn that quickly. One of the departments I want to highlight is our IT department. I think they're extremely talented in the work that they do to support the town, but they're also being charged with marketing the town right now with some of the social media and other things. I know you talked about Facebook and I wonder if you could expand upon that. What, you know, we have a lot of residents who aren't on Facebook. Quite frankly, I'm at a point in my life where I'm envious of that.
Yeah.
But, you know, people who are not online, you know, what, what, what could the strategy look like going forward to make sure that we're communicating and get the most participation possible about whether it's a meeting, initiative, something that's coming up, an announcement? I wonder if you could just expand on that.
Yeah, so it's interesting, right? And when we sort of were growing the Facebook page, you know, you can take a look at the demographics and you see the demographics, they usually trend younger. You know, most people on Facebook are, you know, somewhere in the 55 and younger range. And you're not getting the people who are 55 and older. And so we were having this discussion one time, me, the town manager and the Director of Administrative Services. And I was like, you know, my dad, he's the greatest guy in the entire world, but he does not do technology. He has an iPhone, but he only knows how to call me, he doesn't really know how to do anything else. But one thing that my dad does have is an email address. But, one thing that my dad does have is an email address and he checks his email religiously every day, I'm pretty sure nobody ever emails him, but he checks it anyways. So, I was like, oh, if my dad has an email address, like all these other people who are not in the Facebook demographic may have an email address. And so, what we did is we created a newsletter, and so, basically, what we did is we took all the stuff from the Town Manager's Report and we took the stuff from social media and we just dropped it into a newsletter format. And so, we have something like three thousand people now signed on to our newsletter. And if you look at the demographics, it's, trends sixty-five and older, it's something like two thousand people who are signed up to the newsletter are sixty-five and older. So, we're sort of hitting that demographic, but it wasn't good enough. And so, we thought, what else can we do? So, what we started to do was we print out the newsletter. And because there's no newspapers anymore, you know, it's hard for people to sort of get that information. So, we started printing out these newsletters and we go to the Council on Aging and we drop off a hundred copies, we leave a hundred copies sort of in the tax collector's office, the town clerk's office, and a bunch of other random places, the library, the recreation department. And so, if, least if you're going to do some sort of town business or something, you know that you're getting the information out there. We use our Bill Ricker cable access to get some sort of information out. If it's a big thing, we have access to Code Red to use that. So, one time, we did a free, we were closing a school and the whole entire library was untouched and the books were not sort of at the level that the public library would take them and we didn't wanna throw them away. So, I was like, well, what are we gonna do? So, we did a free book giveaway, but we put it on social media and it didn't really get the response because it was in the middle of summer that we expected it to get. And so, we seldom, you know, use it in this way, but we did a reverse nine-one-one call to sort of, you know, let everybody in town know that we were doing this free book giveaway. And, you know, all of the books, we thought it was gonna take all day to give them away and they were gone within the first, you know, three hours. And, so, we try and think of any possible idea that we can to sort of get the information out and get the word out. But, it's tough because some people, you know, they're busy with their daily lives, they're busy with what's going on and they don't wanna consume that information. And so, what's important is, is that, you know, we have good relationships with the youth leagues and sort of the nonprofits in town, like the food pantry and all of these sort of other places, and we make sure that, you know, we keep them in the loop about what's going on. So, then, you know, when they're on the ball field or, you know, they're passing out food to people, they can talk about sort of what's going on in town and, you know, tell them sort of the positives or this is what's going on, you know, with XYZ projects and all that stuff. So, we do it sort of from every way that you possibly can, but it's hard to get it out and you have to work at it and it's a constant sort of battle to get the right information out there.
Thank you.
And the website, too. You know, we don't get a lot of people who go to the website, but the website is good as sort of a, like a, like a file cabinet, right? And so, like, all the information's there and you can always point to people to the website, you know, here it is, but people don't actively go to the website to find stuff, you have to kind of push them in that direction. But, you know, it's, like I said, it's hard to get people the information, but you gotta constantly work at it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Two questions for you. First of all, again, as I like my fellow Select Board members on the fact that you're a, congratulate you on you're a finalist for the job, so I'm much appreciated that you're here tonight.
Thank you.
One thing is, is that you had alluded to the fact that we're gonna be, probably one of the first things the Town Manager is gonna be doing is looking for both an assistant Town Manager and a Finance Director.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if you could tell me more specifically, what are the qualities, experience, education, what, what types of, you know, what are you looking for in those two positions if you would, to be a Town Manager?
Yeah, yeah, and so, I think that Assistant Town Manager job is really, is really important because that job is sort of your right-hand man, somebody that, you know, that you can lean on to help you when you have sort of an issue and that you need some guidance and you wanna bounce things off of, you know, that's a very important position. And so, you know, everybody has weaknesses or gaps and everybody has strengths and so, you know, I obviously don't want someone who's exactly like me, you know, you want someone to sort of fill the holes that you sort of have. And not only that, but organizational holes that you might have. And so, you're talking about communication, you know, maybe it's somebody who has sort of some communication skills. Or, I don't know, you know, if, you know, there's maybe other holes in sort of town in that you would want that person to be strong in, that they could help sort of, you know, continue to lead that department. So, you want somebody who is a hard worker, a go-getter, you know, I'd love someone, you know, you're never gonna find yourself to do your own job, but you'd love someone to, who wants to be a Town Manager one day because they're gonna look at things in a different sort of way and they're gonna wanna soak stuff up like a sponge and they're gonna work really hard and they are going to, you know, wanna be involved and wanna be part of things and want to, you know, get stuff done and learn and, you know, do all of the stuff, sort of, you know, like I do and the person below me, he wants to be a Town Manager one day and, you know, he has a lot of really great qualities and you'd want somebody like that in sort of, you know, your right-hand person. And like I said, you want someone to fill some organizational gaps that may exist. And then, you know, me and John were actually talking before, hiring finance people is very difficult right now, but you would want a finance person, so, this is a big budget, you would want somebody who has some experience, you know, with budgets of this size. You're probably not going to find somebody, you know, exactly like that, you're gonna want somebody who may be sort of, you know, a budget close to this. And then, you're gonna have someone to have experience with, you know, putting the recap together, financial policies, you know, putting the budget together, you know, all of those sort of things. And you want somebody that, you know, you can work collaboratively with in that, you know, the board and myself sort of have, you know, aligning goals. You know, your last Finance Director was really good, he was really bright, you know, the way that he handled the local receipts to make sure you guys got free cash, he was excellent. So, you'd wanna find someone like him, but, you know, they're rare, so you have to, you know, you have to make it sort of a place that they wanna come to.
Thank you.
You have to do some of those things that I talked about in the beginning.
Thank you very much. And my second question is, is that, again, something that you alluded to earlier was the MBTA Community Zone in the Section 3A.
Yeah.
Just curious about your thoughts on that and, you know, it's gonna be a town meeting vote this time, it may or may not pass. If it passes, we go one direction, if it doesn't pass, we go possibly in another direction. Just wondering what your thoughts are on, on both sides of that.
Yeah, so, I've spent a lot of time thinking about MBTA communities and I, you know, fully expected this question to come up. And so, do I think, you know, they did some good things with the bill and then, they did some things with the bill that I didn't think were so great. And so, housing is obviously a regional problem and the town of Wilmington can't fix it, the town of Bill Ricker can't fix it, the town of Chelmsford can't fix it, everybody can't fix the problem alone. And so, you know, I think the way that they did it in a regional sort of way that, you know, if you have your commuter rail, then you're in adjacent commu, then, you know, the adjacent community is off of that. And so, that all made sense to me, sort of how they did that. You know, how they came up with the numbers and how they came up with, you know, the area close, you know, to the train station and, you know, the amount of units that you have to have and sort of the other restrictions they put on you. I didn't think that was great because I thought, you know, the town should have more control. But, so, I look at it this way, is that Milton may have said no, but I think eventually they're going to have to say yes. And so, you have to sort of look at it as an opportunity. And, you know, you look at it as an opportunity to sort of do some of those things that I talked about before. You know, you can take thirty-eight and, you know, you can sort of dress that up and you could bring in some money to underground those wires, make those sidewalks look really nice, bring in sort of, you know, I know you guys wanna do mixed use in that area. You know, that makes a lot of sense and you have to look at it as sort of an opportunity to upgrade that area. And I understand that change is hard for some people, it's hard for me and it's hard for a lot of people. You know, they moved here so many years ago and they wanted to look this way and they expected to look this way and they wanted to continue to look this way. But, unfortunately, change is inevitable and so, you have to sort of mold that change to the way you wanna do it. And so, one of the outside-of-the-box things that I had thought of was you make the, so if you go to a town meeting this spring, you know, you make it so, you don't have a moratorium, but the zoning doesn't go in effect until, you know, December thirty-first at twenty twenty-four, whatever the date is, you know, it goes into effect one day later. That way, it gives you some time to see, you know, maybe what happens in Milton, maybe what happens in Winthrop or Rockport or some of these other communities that wanna fight it. And then, it gives you some time, if you have to go back to fall town meeting, and make an adjustment. But, like I said, I think that the, the state's been pretty serious that they want that to happen and they are going to make it happen and that even if you say no, they're gonna force you to comply. So, it's one of those things, like I said, it's an opportunity and you should figure out a way to make it happen and sort of make it happen what's right for Wilmington.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I know we're closing in, oh, sorry, to the chair. I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I was gonna say, I won't keep you long, you've actually, well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
It's, it's been great speaking with you and hearing your, you've actually answered all my questions that I had within your, with talking. So, I guess I'm just gonna ask you, and just kind of like in a sentence or two, what makes you most excited to, you know, do this job, to get this job?
Yeah, so, like I said, I grew up next door and, you know, I grew up next door in North Reading and I live in Derry, New Hampshire right now and my wife just took a job in PBD and since we've moved up there, she has wanted to move back to this area in sort of the worst way possible. So, she wants to come back into the Wilmington, North Reading, Reading sort of area. And, you know, that's, you know, I wanna come to a place and I wanna put down roots and I wanna be here for a long time and I want to sort of see all of these sort of iterations go through the process. And, you know, like I said, Wilmington has a ton of potential and it's a place where that you could come in and then, you know, you could do all of this work that you set out to do and then, five years later, you have another like great set of projects and goals and things, initiatives that you wanna do. And then, five years after that, you know, there's more and more work to do. Wilmington's a great town, there's a lot of potential, there's a lot of opportunity. You know, I would love to work here for a long time and this is sort of the place that I wanna be, I wanna put down roots, sort of raise my family. And I think that, you know, Wilmington's an incredible place and that's pretty much it.
Yeah, well, it is, but.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Mr. Kira?
Clancy, congratulations on being a finalist. What's your dealings with collective bargaining and unions and?
Yeah, yeah, so, I'm, you know, I'm sort of the one A negotiator with the Town Manager and so, like, he'll handle the big ones like the police, the fire, but, you know, he'll let me handle sort of the smaller ones like, you know, police dispatch, paramedics, and, you know, I'll, you know, sort of run with the ball on a lot of those to the, you know, one-yard line and then, sort of, he punches it in. And then, there's times where sort of, you know, the heat gets so elevated that, you know, he kind of removes himself from the process and he's like, you know, go in there and maybe you can kind of come to the terms on these last little bits and pieces. And so, there's been a couple of things like that. And so, negotiations were hot at one point with the DPW Union about sort of the salaries for the water and wastewater operators. And we were losing all of these people and we couldn't keep people in there. And so, he was like, can you work with them and kind of figure out a way to, you know, retain some employees that we have because we were losing them, bring in some new employees and do it in the most sort of cost-effective way that you possibly can without ruining the Water Department. And so, what I did was I met with the, sort of the shop stewards over there of the Water and the Sewer Department, I met with the Union President, and we sort of devised this plan where we would eliminate one water operator who was no longer, you know, that job was vacant anyways, and then, we would increase everybody else's wages, all the inside Water Department guys by four dollars. And that ended up being sort of a cost-neutral solution. And since then, we now have filled all of our empty Water Department jobs and the people who are leaving, we have stopped them from leaving. And so, you know, I've come up with a couple sort of out-of-the-box solutions as well, having a real problem with getting CDL drivers, too. And so, what I did is met with the Union and we came up with a plan where, we call it heavy motor oper, heavy motor equipment operator and we pay them, you know, X amount of dollars and then, maintenance man is a little bit lower on the salary scale. And we figured that if they came in at a maintenance man for one year and we paid for their CDL, that seven-thousand-dollar difference between those two job classifications, that was the difference between, that's, you know, what your CDL would cost. And so, we bring those people in as a maintenance man, we pay for them to get their CDL and then, once they get their CDL, they move up to that higher job classification after a year. So, you know, it's a benefit to us, it's a benefit to the employee and so, I'm always trying to think of these out-of-the-box solutions on sort of how to get things done without crushing the taxpayer.
Thank you.
So, man, I wanna thank you very much, congratulating you on being one of our finalists.
Thank you.
We appreciate your open candor with us.
And an opportunity, Clancy, for a final closing statement to the board.
Yeah, and so, like I said before, you know, I'm really excited about this position, this is a position where I'd wanna stay for, you know, a long, long time, you know, and so, it's a great opportunity, it's a great place, it's a great place to, you know, it has tons of potential, I'd love to work on these projects, I'd love to work with you guys as a group and girls. And, you know, I think it's a fantastic opportunity and, like I said, you know, I wanna be part of this community, I wanna be sort of, you know, part of it, included in it and doing everything. And, you know, I hope that I've said it all and I'll leave you guys with this, right, is that if you have any questions about me, do not hesitate to reach out to me or if you have any questions about me, feel free to reach out to the Town Manager in Bill Ricker, reach out to the Select Board members in Bill Ricker and if you don't know them, let me know and I'm happy to connect you with them if you guys have any final questions, so.
Okay, great. And so, we'll be interviewing tomorrow night, as you know, and the board will be deliberating on Monday and you'll be hearing from us after that.
Sounds good.
Okay? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to?
You got business.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, very nice meeting us.
Wire, I'm so afraid.
Wire.
Thank you, Clancy, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Clancy, take care. All right, so, Mr. Chair, you're, you're at halftime now, so I'll send you back to the locker room. We'll be back tomorrow night for the next two contestants before the board and, and then, we'll talk tomorrow night before you go into deliberations for next Monday.
Great.
Thank you.[1718.95]